Hello, I'm Kier Kazanzis, CEO of Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits. Welcome to our candidate forum. I'm just here to say hi and welcome, and I'm going to hand it over to Angel right now.
All right, thank you, everybody, for coming to our SVCN's nonprofit candidate forum, which is sponsored by the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. My name is Angel Aliano, I'm the Policy and Advocacy Fellow with SVCN. Today, we're joined by two candidates for the Board of Supervisors, District Two. As an organization, SVCN hosts these candidate forum to provide nonprofit leaders with the opportunity to learn more about the ideas, visions, and priorities of candidates for local office. Today, we'll focus our discussion on issues that impact nonprofits as community-based service providers, government contractors, and advocates. As a continuing SVCN practice, I want to acknowledge that this office sits on the unceded lands of the Moakma Aloni Tribe, together to let us commit to educating ourselves and advocating for Indigenous peoples and all communities that have been neglected and displaced by the US government or other colonial powers. Before we get started, I want to take a moment to thank our sponsors of the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. SVCF empowers and provides resources to community-based organizations to initiate systemic change. We couldn't have put together this forum without them. Now, to kick things off, I'd like to introduce our moderator for today. Please welcome Brandon Fo. Brandon is a county government and politics reporter for San Jose Spotlight, who also covers the Vietnamese-American community. He hails from Southern California, but was brought up in East San Jose and Morgan Hill schools. Without further ado, I'll pass it to Brandon. Let me just awkwardly walk this mic over.
Perfect. Thank you, Angel, and welcome, candidates. Now, before we begin, I'll explain the ground rules regarding timing and format of today's forum. Candidates, you will each have up to two minutes for opening statements. Afterward, I will be asking a series of both sponsored submitted and audience pre-submitted questions. Both will have up to two minutes to answer each question, plus an optional one minute each rebuttal if you choose to take it. If you will be taking the rebuttal, please pause for a moment to let our staff change the timing. During the forum, we will be including a lightning round of questions. We'll communicate your fun topics that will require a yes or no answer, or a response of one sentence or less. After asking a few more questions, we will finish up by having each candidate share their closing statements, which they will have up to two minutes to do. Throughout the forum, candidates will be speaking on a rotating basis to ensure that each candidate has a fair opportunity to speak first or last. And one final note for our candidates, please remember to be respectful of one another, and the time limit's locked into each answer. For your convenience, we will have a timer located on the screen in the front row, so you can visually see how much time remains for each question. It's that screen. And with that being said, I'd like to introduce our candidates, Betty Young and Madison Witt. Welcome, candidates, and we'll begin with our opening statements. You'll have two minutes each, and we'll start with Madison.
Well, thank you very much, everyone, for being here. Thanks to the Silicon Valley Council of Nonprofits and all the partners, and of course, the Silicon Valley Community Foundation for hosting this. Really happy to be here to talk about all the issues that pertain to a lot of your organizations. But let me just start out with by saying that, like many of you, my family is vested in this community. We, many of us, want to live in a community where we feel a home for our family. I'm not alone to say that I want my daughter, who's actually here today, to be able to afford to live in a community where she was born and raised, a community that is safe, clean, secure, and vibrant. A community where we have compassion to help those who are not as fortunate as some of us are to not live on the street and have a safe place to live at night. A community where a young family can actually afford quality childcare. So, how can we make that community a reality? Well, I have some ideas. Let's start by demanding accountability in our elected officials. Let's put the right measures in place with our programs and services. Let's deliver results to all our residents regardless of their zip codes. Let's work with every single agency and municipality to put the community's needs first by leaning on our nonprofit partners to provide additional help in the areas of expertise. We can accomplish all of this if we just put our differences aside, quit the blame game, work together, and just get things done. So, I just can't imagine that we live in a county with an annual budget of $12.5 billion, and yet we still have people living on our streets. Families are being pushed out of this community due to the high cost of housing, and parents are so scared to allow their kids to walk to school because they feel it's really, really unsafe. That is one sad state of our community. And that is why I'm running for county supervisor, because I have one mission, and that is to change this status quo, because it's time for results. Thank you very much.
Betty?
I mean, dramatic talk. Thank you. Hi, everyone, my name is Betty Young. I'm a first-time candidate with 11 years of experience working at the county organization at almost level, every level of the county operation. In direct services, project management, policy development, and emergency operations with both Supervisor Chavez and the administration. Having worked on both sides, I know that the county is good, but we can do better, and we have to be better. My ambition is for our county to work for everyone, and that begins with the folks who make this work happen every day, our county employees and our nonprofit partners who deliver the majority of our county's health and human services. By working collaboratively to deliver services and coordination with an extended emphasis on prevention and an environment that promotes innovation, we will continue to strengthen our stake in it to serve those in their greatest time of need with dignity and respect. We're, I'm running, we're running to Santa Clara County District Two. You all know, I don't need to mention this, but District Two is the highest-needs district in all of the county. We have over half of the county's unhoused population. We're the most densely populated, multiple generations stacked on top of each other in households, some by choice, many out of necessity. We, the majority of the county's clients for social services reside in Santa Clara County's District Two. I'm going to tell everybody, whether you live in District Two or not, you are invested in us doing well, because when District Two does well, we do, everybody does well, because all the challenges in all the districts exist in District Two at the same time, all the time. And I know that intimately well, as a lifelong born and raised resident, and as someone who's served this community for the last 11 years.
Thank you. Thank you for those opening statements. We will now begin our Q and A period with our first question, which is the following. On August 14, the Bay Area Housing Finance Authority voted to remove the Affordable Housing Bond from the ballot in November, which would have generated $2.4 billion for governments in South Bay to build more affordable homes and preserve existing affordable housing. The question for the candidates is, what are your ideas or commitments to expanding and protecting revenue sources that would address the housing crisis? This time, we will start with Betty.
Thank you, Brandon. So, when we talk about the housing crisis, we're talking about two really large oversize of five buckets of work, right? It's construction and services. So, in terms of construction, with respect to the question of expanding and protecting revenue, there's no substitute for bonding, which is why I'm so disappointed that the housing bond measure was taken off the ballot. As the campaign manager for 2016 Measure A Housing Bond Measure, I've seen firsthand what it's capable of and the changes that we're able to make in the lives of those who need it the most. So, we want to have to continue, we have to continue to pursue local bonds at the city, state, and regional level, because there is no substitute for bonding. In terms of services, my goal also is to portion 25% of the annual fund balance for operating services, prioritizing services that we provide to unhoused anyone. Every year, the fund balance is preserved for checking capital improvements. There's no other fast move for this, it's just a way it's always been done by administration. So, there's an opportunity for us to put our stake in the ground and say 25%, not asking for the whole thing, but 25% of this portioned fund balance can be reserved for emerging needs to allow our nonprofit partners, service providers, to pivot as necessary with flexible resources to be able to respond to need in real time, because there's always going to be emerging needs. The folks in this room know that firsthand. After that, after we balance the budget, to be able, we have another opportunity to look at the county's annual financial report in October to identify any additional fund balances that can be allocated, sorry, to service needs and affordable housing. Now, in the category of defending, I just want to use one prime example. Governor Newsom tried to take $30 million of ERAP money from the county that had been allocated to the county for charter schools. This is not a statement against charter schools, let me make that clear. This is a statement that we will not allow local funding to be taken away for state responsibilities. And I hope that every candidate that sits before you for any local officer will commit to making that message very clear to our government.
Thank you, Betty. Madison?
Thank you. I answered this question based on my nearly 10 years of working, serving on the San Jose City Council. So, I served on the San Jose City Council as a council member and Vice Mayor. I worked with our community members, along with housing developers and nonprofit organizations, to create more than 1,000 units of affordable housing, and that's just in District Seven alone. That's an issue that I represented. And that's not talking about the work that I did on a citywide level. We did this through a variety of different resources and strategies. So, three strategies that I wanted to share with you all today. The first strategy is, we need to foster partnerships between government, private developers, nonprofit organizations, to really pool those resources for affordable housing development. We can't do any of these, especially in this day and age where things are starting to escalate, with construction materials are so high, we need to have those private-public partnership. These collaborations can leverage private capital with public incentives such as tax credit or land grants. Number two, we need to implement or expand inclusionary zoning laws that require a percentage of new housing developments to be affordable. That's very simple things to do, we can implement that, and get that with the city, we can do that with the county. Number three, secure additional federal funding through programs like low-income housing tax credits, community development block grants, and housing choice vouchers. Given that housing is also a hot topic in the presidential election, I actually heard candidate Kamala Harris talk about that, I will make sure that our county is ready and mobilized to take advantage of any new housing programs proposed by the federal government, aka President Harris. Thank you.
Thanks, Madison. Before I open up for possible rebuttals, just a friendly reminder from staff and some here, you can just turn on your mics each time you talk. Now, anyone want to rebut anything the other candidate said? Perfect. We'll go on to the next question. Local nonprofits comprise most of the contracted providers that represent 90% of Santa Clara County's behavioral health safety net. However, recent state-level changes in healthcare reimbursement structures and a retaliating behavioral health payment reform threaten nonprofits' abilities to financially support themselves and retain sufficient staff to meet community demands. The question is, what role can you or your office play in ensuring that Santa Clara County implements payment reform in a manner that enhances or preserves our behavioral health systems of care? This question will first go to Madison.
Thank you very much. This is one of those questions that, you know, unless you work in the current environment that you're in right now, you wouldn't probably understand what's going on. So, I actually assist on, you know, last-minute homework, so that I can actually provide some answers. But, you know, as we know, and also as a former recipient of Medicare, Medicare program, because, you know, I grew up in Moleskaus, we were very poor, so our family received Medicare as part of my healthcare insurance. The state and the federal government have always had a very complex system for financing and delivering behavioral health care. We all know that, we used to do that every day. And if you couple that with the complex financing of Medicare, my understanding is that California has actually begun some of these payment reforms components and will continue through 2027. So, we're actually in our second and a half years of that. As supervisor, my goal is to make sure that the new counting behavioral health payment reform proposal, whether we used to have cost-based requirements, now it's going to be for the service system, that it needs to take the burden away from the county employees as well as the service providers. What we want to do is that we can streamline, make it seamless, so that the less time we spend on trying to get the reimbursement, the more time we can actually provide better healthcare, quality higher healthcare for our patients and for residents. So, I would do everything in my power to make sure that we achieve that goal as an ex-supervisor.
Thank you, Betty.
As we continue to implement accounting, transition from cost reimbursement to pay-for-service, I want to make sure that we don't lose any more providers, because administration was not listening to our behavioral health contractors. As supervisor, you will always have access to me and to the administration through me to voice your concerns and recommendations on appropriate implementation and mitigations. I look forward to work with providers and county administration to seek the maximum reimbursement from state and federal resources, now actively support our administration contractors through the Health and Policy Governing Body to implement policy that drives county implementation of Medicare for its whole person care, so providers can focus on care and not on building. I know, as I've stated in the prompt, at least 90% of our allocation care is provided by our nonprofit partners. We need to govern with you, not govern you. And where human lives are concerned, it's more important to do things right than it is to do it fast. So, I look forward to being a really good partner. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Any?
Sorry. Can I get a pen? This is kind of run out of ink, I'm so sorry.
While we get that sorted out, any rebuttals anyone wants to make? All righty. Well, my next question is, composed of over 125 nonprofit leaders and allies, the Raisin Equity Action Leadership, otherwise known as the RIO Coalition, has been meeting since June 2020 to advocate for a more racially just and equitable society. RIO's Santa Clara County Leadership Board Group has been working closely with county leaders, the Department of Commerce, and built a comprehensive civic engagement process that centers the voices of individuals with lived experience. The question is, what ideas or commitments would you have to enhance, strengthen, or expand civic engagement approaches? Would you commit to supporting and office of civic engagement? This question will first go to Betty.
Thank you. Yes, I would support the creation of the Office of Civic Engagement. And as someone who has created very many offices of the county, I will make sure this office is strategically placed in the county org chart to have gravitas and influence and investments necessary to turn, to entrench the opportunities for civic engagement access and the ability to influence policy makers. Office, the office is necessary to facilitate civic engagement at all of its stages, information sharing, involvement, and stakeholder death, and support different policy initiatives and projects, because every single initiative and every project will require a different level of civic engagement. I think it's appropriate for an office such as this to help manage that process and facilitate that. My experience at the county is not to rely on administration for civic engagement or civic engagement, to track the course for that. This is not a knock on them, but an honest observation, based on the numerous community stakeholder processes, commissions, and task forces, I have helped launch with Supervisor Chavez, Supervisor Pretenti, and the administration. To launch and finalize policies to construction projects such as the Vietnamese-American Service Center, following eight years of community engagement, any member of a community who departed this eight-year process can walk into the vast right now and point to something that they propose or they recommended. And I think that is what true shared governance looks like, when we're building services and programs for community, by community, for the ultimate success. My examples, experience also lends itself to the hub Foster Youth Resource Center that we broke down on last year, and upon final construction, we will have 81 units of transition to H housing on top of our resource center that was designed by current former foster youth, or foster youth. The community health and business engagement work that lead to COVID-19, the active leadership coalition, the heat prevention transport, and our policies and investments into services for survivors of human trafficking and to important violence, which in one year was increased by 400% from $2 to $10,000. That was because of you all in this room and the advocacy that you created and the civic engagement that we had together.
Thank you, Betty. Madison?
So, I want to share with you guys all the true story. Since we started this campaign, my team and I have knocked on thousands of doors. It's been a year and a half. So, of all the questions that we get asked at the doors, the most recurring one is, what does the Board of Supervisors do? In other words, what is the role of county government? Nine out of 10 voters, no exaggeration, asked me that question. And why do they ask me that question? Because there is a lack of communication and contact from the county to its residents. And it's been like this for years. So, yes, I have several ideas on how we can encourage our residents to be more civically engaged, and for the sake of time, I'll just focus on three. Number one, we need to have an inclusive outreach and engagement process between the county and residents. How do we do that? As supervisor, I would not leave any community behind or unturned, regardless of their zip codes. It's time that we treat every community with the same respect and dignity. As long as everyone is willing to engage and participate, you will have a seat at the table with me, and I will make sure of that. Number two, we need to establish a youth council and a community advisory council, so that I can meet with them on a monthly basis to really hear what's going on, on the ground, in the field, in the community. That needs to happen from them to me. I want to learn, I want to listen in order to develop effective policy. Number three, organize workshops and public meetings where community members can propose, discuss, and voting funding priorities. We are here to work for you. Again, with a budget of $12.5 billion, we need to make sure that we're providing the needs that the community wants. These ideas and the commitments, when implemented collectively, can significantly enhance civic engagement, leading to stronger, more vibrant communities. And yes, I'm committed to supporting an Office of Civic Engagement.
Thank you, Madison. Anyone wish to make a rebuttal? Thank you for those answers. We're going to shift to our lightning round questions at this time. There will be a series of quick questions each man to be answered in a yes or no, or respond one sentence or less. We will start with Madison and alternate between Madison and Betty for each question. The first one is, what is your favorite public park in your district? Great question.
Favorite park? That's a communication too. It's Olivia's first park that she was born.
Excellent. Betty?
Call Your Park.
Perfect. What artists or podcasts have you been listening to recently? Betty?
What?
What artists or podcasts have you been listening to recently?
Oh, I've been, real proud of the Drake. Yeah. Drama. And other Miss Chats.
Haven't we all? Madison?
Jay Shetty.
Would you rather only eat sweet foods or only savory foods for a whole week? Madison?
Savory.
Betty?
Sweet.
What is your favorite restaurant store or other business in District Two? Betty?
Academic Coffee, Second of Land, local owned, family business. Support some local.
Madison?
Arrojo, my San Grill.
Love it. Back to the regular Q and A. It wasn't that easy the whole time. In March, voters narrowly approved Proposition One, which aims to modernize the mental health services act, bolster behavioral health housing, and can support luxury facilities through a $6.36 billion bond. This fall, Californians will also vote on Proposition Thirty-Six, which would classify certain drug offenses as treatment-impended felonies and increase the penalties for some drug times and death. While some advocates highlight the value of short-term treatment benefits and temporarily addressing street homelessness, others warn that compulsory care combined with stricter drug enforcement represents a punitive approach to addiction and mental illness that's previously failed. Among the options of constructing new inpatient facilities, strengthening preventative care, and building permanent supportive housing, what approach or approaches do you think the county should take to address our community's mental health and addiction needs? We're going to start with Madison.
I would say all of the above. I think that inpatient facilities, strength, preventive care, and building permanent supportive housing are really, really critical. Given the seriousness of the mental health and addiction crisis that are now afflicting on our community, we can't afford to limit our thinking. There is no one-size-fits-all solution in this. Since these crises are manifesting in multiple, manifesting itself in multiple ways. For example, separate custody mental health facilities are needed for residents who are in the criminal justice system to segregate them from the general population of inmates, either in a separate building entirely or in a separate within the same structure. That element of crisis is very different from a very dangerous new title of drug addiction from fentanyl and unknown drugs additives, such as animal crackalizer that we've been carrying a lot in our community. Now, more than ever, street drugs users have no idea what they're taking. So, education, prevention, early interventions likely are more effective with this young group of people. And so, I'd rather focus on that than focus on incarceration. So, to address these multifaceted issues of mental health and drug addiction, the county really needs to address all solutions, including supportive housing, inpatient facilities, and prevention. As supervisor, I will work with my colleagues to devote adequate county budget funding to this crisis and develop new sources of revenue from the state and federal sources to augment our efforts. And I wanted to be very clear that I do support Proposition Thirty-Six.
Thank you, Madison. Betty?
Thank you. All the above. And I've been known at the county organization in my little corners of departments and offices to say that we do everything all at the same time as fast as possible, because that is the nature of the crisis at our hands right now. The state has given us new leeway in being able to create a system of compulsory confinement. Now, the thing is that we need to do that with compassion and with care, and have rebound how this work is done. The county administration has told us that it's too big of a problem. How do we wrap ourselves around this? The Behavioral Health Contractors Association has told me that's a finite number. There are, it's one too many, but there is a finite number of individuals that we see time and time again revolving through our criminal justice system, where they should really be receiving treatment and assistance, possibly in an inpatient facility. So, what we can do is build out an inpatient care facility now, build out the medical treatment beds that allows all law enforcement and our behavioral health workers and our care providers and our nonprofit partners to build, address the most pressing matters first in our community, to be able to give the services that they need. In the meantime, we have to continue building out our behavioral health system, which is of all the above strategy. But of course, we are at different levels of phases of growth in each category, and where I see us need a lot of partnership and really consideration for new investment and revenue, is to strengthen preventative care as we continue to contribute to these facilities and look for any revenue sources to continue building permanent supportive housing. One of those examples is that was at the groundbreaking of the Pathways, New Pathways Facility in Nagui Park a few weeks ago. That is an opportunity, that is an example of the opportunities that we have when we come together between city, county, and community to identify opportunities, spaces, and beds for those who need it right now, whether it be through sober living environments, inpatient care, outpatient services, preventative measures. We have to build this out. We know that the state's given us a five-year timeline to build out our inpatient facilities to enact our conservatorship laws. We can do that sooner and faster.
Thank you, Betty.
Sorry, I have a little bit.
Absolutely, you have one minute.
Yeah.
Oh, give me, give us one second to adjust. Do you agree?
Here, here, yes.
Okay, we're good.
And given everything that Betty has talked about, I wanted to know her position on Proposition Thirty-Six. Do you support it or do you not?
Oh, thank you for that question, Madison. I am still deciding. The thing is that, like, I worry about the pension swing way too far. Oftentimes, our behavioral health clients are criminalized for what is really a medically diagnosed condition. So, I have not decided whether to support or oppose. I think it adjusts certain key elements or shortfalls or coming to Prop Forty-seven. But the thing is that the legislative analysis has already said that implementing Prop Thirty-Six as is, as proposed, will gut funding for preventative services, for medical treatment, for behavioral health services, and also for services for our unhoused. So, my biggest concern is where do we replenish those funds from? And how do we make sure that the pension does not swing too far in over criminalizing, overpleasing our communities of public?
Thank you, Betty. Kudos to you for making under the time and for staff for working with that herd of solidarity there.
Good opportunity.
This next question has been submitted by Choose Children, an initiative of the Silicon Valley Community Foundation. In a recent public survey conducted by Choose Children, four out of five likely November voters indicated that they want local elected officials to prioritize policies that make Silicon Valley a place where families with children can live and thrive. At the same time, it is estimated that Santa Clara County needs over 19,000 infant and toddler childcare spaces to meet the current demand. And if families are able to find childcare, they are struggling to cope with the high costs of care. Families report having to make difficult financial choices, such as delaying toward decreasing retirement savings, using emergency savings, reducing essential spending, and delaying addressing healthcare needs in order to afford care. The question for these candidates is, what specific strategies will you pursue in order to expand access to affordable, quality childcare? For this, we're going to start with Betty.
Okay, so let me just start with, as a mom, you know, I get two paychecks from my job twice a month. One paycheck needs to go to rent, and the other one went to childcare. So, thank goodness, I have my daughters now in public school, and so that alleviates our family budget a little bit. I didn't write for office, so that just was a budget. But, so, we need staffing slots and space, AKA facilities, that increase the provision of quality and accessible childcare. First, the county has to be, the county itself has to be a model for the provision of childcare and child-to-provision services for our own employees and clients. 22,000 employees at the county, so that's a lot of parents and a lot of families that need the support right now. During the pandemic, our county provided all employees with childcare subsidies in a matter of weeks, from the time it was approved at the board to the time that payments are made to our employees' childcare provider of choice, weeks. For those of you who have been contracting with the county for years, you know that that's lightning speed for the county. And it happens even faster than that when childcare is concerned. So, I bring that to say that we know it can be done, we can be that example, and we're going to start creating this model and community with you all in partnership, we have to be that example first. Next, Vietnamese-American Service Center, just want to use that as an example. Our municipal blueprint there cannot be licensed out of child Our physical blueprint there could not be licensed as a childcare facility, but we were able to pivot and create child supervision. That was a new concept at the county. That's something that I had to shop and convince all of our administration and the board supervisors to approve, where we create space for children with toddler toilets. And we provide it, we hire licensed childcare providers to provide professional, safe, accessible childcare for caregivers and parents while they're receiving patient services or having their behavior health appointments at the desk who will watch their children for them. So those kind of innovations of being able to be flexible and broad with our thinking, in other words, innovation, right? To be able to identify all the childcare opportunities and child supervision opportunities that are available to us. At the same time, we have to be good partners to our community's initiatives, such as First Five and the Jaws of Both Girl Family Services and Season Twenty Collective. President Ellen Turner, on behalf of the county, has made a commitment to build the future. I will.
Madison?
Sure. Yeah, let me just share another personal story. When our daughter Olivia, this is right there, was born, the cost of childcare was so high, and it's still high today, that my husband and I made a collective decision for him to be a stay at home dad. And that was really a part for him because he was primarily the breadwinner. You know, I was on the city council. We didn't make much at the time. But we figured that if both of us continued to work, one of our incomes would go entirely to pay for childcare. And we would miss out on the first two years of her life. And yeah, hindsight, we made the best choice, but not many families have, you know, those kind of choices in our community. So I understand how important it is for the county to expand access to affordable, high quality childcare for every family in our county. So this is a very, very important topic. It's an important issue for me. Three things that I'm looking at to do should I get elected to be the next supervisor. Number one, expand subsidies and voucher programs for low and middle income families to help them afford high quality childcare. Number two, provide direct support and increase public funding to childcare providers, particularly in underserved communities to reduce the cost of families and ensure that providers can maintain high quality services for families and for the little ones. And number three, invest in the childcare workforce by creating partnerships between the county and small businesses to create more childcare centers, particularly near workplaces or in community hubs. We can do this by streamlining the licensing process for new childcare providers without compromising safety and quality standards, making it easy to open facilities and also offer, you know, many individuals in the community a chance, you know, a small business. So to me, these strategies, if we implement them together collectively, we can expand access to affordable, high quality childcare.
Thank you. Anyone wish to make rebuttal? Our next question is, nonprofit members of the Racial Equity Action Leadership, otherwise known as RIO Coalition, have been working to fight systemic racism within the organizations and among their governmental, philanthropic and private sector partners. RIO has joined county staff in drafting the Racial Equity Strategic Program, which outlines processes and practices to promote racial equity within county administration and to improve outcomes for BIPOC community members. What are the major racial justice and equity milestones that the county should accomplish in the next two years, the next four years and the next ten years? The first, the question will first go to Madison.
This is really important. I can't believe you just gave us two minutes for it, but let's get started. First two years, establish a health equity framework. I know that some of the work has been done right now. It's in the process. So what I'm about to say is just kind of filling in the gap. But we need to develop and adopt a comprehensive health equity framework that reduces health disparities by improving access to quality healthcare in underserved communities. Let's take Regional Medical Center, for example. If the acquisition of the hospital is actually going to happen, which I hope that it would, this will provide quality healthcare for the underserved communities on the east side. The next four years, let's work addressing racial disparities in the criminal justice system. As we anticipate hopefully a new jail, we must work together to address racial disparities in the criminal justice system. We need to implement reforms aimed at reducing racial disparities in policing, in sentencing and incarceration rates. This could include the expansion of devotion programs, reentry support and restorative justice initiative. We can make that happen. And then for the next ten years, create a sustainable equity infrastructure. What I mean by that, let's look at the REU Airport. This is set to close in twenty thirty-one. We have a once in a lifetime opportunity to look at this precious piece of land, a hundred eighty acres, to develop something that is going to be so superb for the community on the east side for many generations to come. I'm willing, ready and able to listen, to learn and actually get inputs from the community so that we can provide the best asset for folks on the east side with this new project.
Thank you. So in two years, two years' time, I would like to work with the RIO Coalition and our community engagement through the new Office of Civic Engagement to actually build out a true equity lens of our budgeting process. We, for the last ten years, I worked on the budget as a staffer, as a policy aide and as a chief of staff. We do have an equity measure over there, but there's been no actual substantial framework or training provided to our staff to be able to make budgeting decisions based on an equity framework. So being able to work, we can't let them work for that. We have to look outwards to our partners to develop what that equity framework treaty looks like. That starts now with our budgeting process. Through the establishment of a charter review commission, I like to take examples, lessons learned from the city. They implemented Measure I, which requires the state to publish a statement that affirms the values of racial and social justice. That's something that we need at the county as well. I'm all about seeing what the best practices out there are and taking it for our own here at the county. In four years' times, I really look for progress in health disparities, making sure that we start chipping away at diabetes, at liver cancer, the number one killer of Vietnamese American men in Santa Clara County, the slow, expanding disease, the one that's treatable. So being able to address health disparities starting now to see the results in four years. Now, also, what's also happening in four years? Kids are going to be graduating from high school, heading off to college. Kids are going to be graduating, not kids, young adults are going to be graduating from college and heading into the workforce. Part of the equity goal is to see more BIPOC representation in all levels of our county governments, our city governments, having their own agency from communities that are now governed by and shaped by government entities, right? We need to start investing now as we have a fifteen percent vacancy rate in our staffing and also the largest cohort of retirees heading off into the sunset. Well deserved, but can we get to the schools now, create non-accredited courses that specifically prepares all professions for employment at the county? Promote and also starting first with those who grew up on county services, those from communities that have been shaped by county programs and services. And in ten years, what I really want to see is good jobs at the county that reflect the diversity of our constituency and as the health disparities can whittle away, where diabetes is no longer an issue. And I'm out of time. Thank you.
We were actually a little early, so if anyone wants to make rebuttal, you can add additional minutes on top of that. Well, it looks like we have time for an additional audience submitted question. The following question is submitted by Parents Helping Parents. Mark, could you ask?
Okay, you may report. You want me to use my? So children with disabilities don't have a voice in what public services are available to assist them and their families. How would you give these twenty-five thousand children, many of which are in D two, with disabilities in this county a voice? How would you make sure that the needs of children with disabilities are considered as part of the county planning and services?
We will start with Betty.
So I just want to start from my own personal experience that when I had the opportunity to create a new health facility in Santa Clara County, one of the first organizations that I reached out to was Parents Helping Parents to bring services to the Vietnamese American Service Center to a community that still had great stigma and very low education about supporting disabled children and children with special needs. And it's that type of collaboration and forward thinking that's really necessary to be able to make sure that children with disabilities and special needs and their families, their parents, their providers care on a daily twenty-four hour continuous basis has the support they need. So in all the conversations we've had today about equity frameworks, about civic engagement, about community engagement, I don't think that we as a society or even as a county has really identified special needs as an interest group, as a primary population yet. And so just as we're also parsing out and identifying voices that have been missing from the table, this is a huge voice that's been missing from the table. And what I really appreciate is the partnership with Parents Helping Parents. And the moment that we gave you, that we came to an agreement to have space at the Vietnamese American Service Center for you, your organization went and hired Vietnamese American counselors to fill that role. That is a prime example of the leadership that we need in District Two and at the county organization, that flexibility, that space for innovation, that's what I'm talking about and being able to live it through. And you know, when we build equity frameworks, that creates a system for everybody to be able to think in those terms of county organization. Thank you, Mark, for your question.
Thank you, Betty. Madison?
So when I was serving on the Franklin McKinley Board of Education, and again, I'm the San Francisco City Council, having, you know, became the first Vietnamese American elected official here in our county, I got the opportunity to really engage and talk with parents and really listen to them about the various needs that they want from both the city and county. And one of the things that's really, really sad for me was, you know, encountering families and people are not open to talking about special needs that, you know, that children need because for some families, it's been stupid since it was up. And that, to me, is just really, really sad. Imagine, and you know, obviously at the time, but now being a mother, you know, my daughter is healthy is the biggest blessing of my life to have a healthy daughter. But I just can't imagine that families, especially young families, having to deal with, you know, to have children that have special needs. So as supervisor, it is going to be my top priority to make sure that their voices are at the table for us to develop programs, services, anything we can do to help them, to help these children in our county. Again, you know, this is one of those issues that they just find boggling to recognize that. Why are they being left behind when they're not even born, you know, in the environment that they should be born along with other children? So yes, it is a very, very important issue and I would make it my top priority to make sure that I dress in the best way that I can.
Thank you, Madison. Well, that was our last question. We originally only had one minute for closing remarks, but since we're a little ahead on time, our candidates will now have two minutes to each to say their closing remarks. We will start.
No more, no more lightning?
No more lightning, sadly, sadly. But we'll start with Betty.
Okay. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present my ideas, my perspective and my vision before you today. I know that the items that we talked about, the topics we talked about today is what we have dedicated your lives for to. And two minutes per question really has not done enough service and justice. I look forward to discussing these issues in all with you to constantly learning from our nonprofit partners, those who are on the ground doing this work on a daily basis, to be able to strengthen our partnerships, not just preserve the partnership, but bolster it and make it more powerful every single day. The county Santa Clara has been a model for many things across the nation and we have the opportunity to continue being a model for what public targeted partnerships and what nonprofit partnerships is like here at the county, with you offering majority of the services to our most vulnerable. Now, in the next twelve years, that would be the full term of the next supervisor potentially, we have some heavy weighted things on deck. Retail the airport, regional medical center, fairgrounds, public transportation infrastructure being built up. Yay for bargain, like you know. Yeah, it's preserving our resources and also looking for new revenue opportunities. I have been really lucky to enjoy a great career at the county the last eleven years as an employee. With no power or authority of my own, I've been able to push the administration and the board supervisors and lobby them towards thinking about new things, looking at services in different ways, building out new projects, new facilities, and also like launching new initiatives that they're not comfortable with. Like the community health and business and patient team, adding tightening up one hundred twenty-five community health workers into a, to a community confined by census tracts with the highest rates of COVID. That was something that you all pushed us to do, not something that administration came up with on its own. The other thing is that we have to be able to build out these services for mental health services and behavioral health services right now, quickly. And I'm so sorry that the county administration fell short in listening to the guidance of our Behavior Health Contractors Association and nonprofit partners. That's a lesson that I need to never repeat again. I look forward to the department as we rebuild this county.
Thank you, Betty. Madison?
Yeah, thank you, Brendan, for moderating. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Kudos to SDCN and also the community foundations for putting this form together. I really respect the work that you are doing on a daily basis. I came from the nonprofit sector too. I used to run an organization for a hundred at home, which is great. We will take booze and we give it to two kitchens so they can provide for residents in our community. You all are an integral part of this county and, you know, and I have deep respect for the work that you do. Having said that, I'm excited, real excited for what's about to come. It's time to press the reset button and start putting our communities first. It's time to lean on each other, from the nonprofit partners to city to agency leaders and deliver results for residents. It's time to end homelessness and it's time to reduce crime. It's time to ensure that our families feel safe at home and out in the community. It's time that we uplift vulnerable families and seniors with more affordable housing options. It's time that we engage our youth and provide them with more choices and options beyond their academic achievements with vocational, technical and trade skills. We can't wait any longer, guys. We, let's get this done. I promise you that I will deliver these results if you elect me as your next county supervisor. And I hope that you go to MadisonWinn.com to learn more about my plan. And I would be honored to have your support in November. So thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Madison. Thank you, candidates, for your participation. I'll pass back to on help. Post more.
Just make it around this room real quick.
You can give us a round of applause for it.
Great. Candidates, thank you for sharing your vision for the future of Santa Clara County and thanks for joining us again today. Of course, a special shout out to our amazing moderator, Brandon. And you've been absolutely wonderful at moderating today's forums. So thank you so much. Everybody, give a round of applause, please, yes. And once again, thank you to the Silicon Valley Community Foundation for sponsoring this event. And thanks to everybody here for making it out today.